City Council Committee of the Whole met in council chambers on January 19, 2023 at 6:03 PM, 6:30 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters listed below. Notice that this meeting was posted on January 17, 2023 at 11:09 AM. This meeting is being recorded. In attendance for Committee of the Whole, we have Counselor Cohen, Counselor Merkel, Counselor Marcelo, Counselor Dominguez, Counselor Presnisky, and Counselor Varela. We also have attending remotely Counselor Hapworth and Counselor Watsonfelt. Absent this evening is Counselor McLean. We also have in attendance from the city of Salem Amanda Giancola from the Planning Department. The subjects for this evening's meeting is to discuss an ordinance to amend a zoning ordinance relative to accessory buildings and structures and affordable accessory dwelling units. This matter was a joint public hearing, which was held, I don't have the dates in front of me, thank you, November 30. And then the joint public hearing was also closed on November 30. The Planning Board met and discussed this matter in front of them at their December meeting. Their recommendation from the December 19 meeting was sent to council, which we accepted at our last council meeting, which was January 9, I believe. We then have 90 days from the close of the joint public hearing to essentially make a decision at council. So that last 90 days would be February, the second meeting in February. So February 28, I believe, is when the 90 days expires. So we have until end of February to make this decision. This matter was brought to Committee of the Whole, which I would like to say thank you for sending this back to Committee of the Whole so we can all be included in the conversation and discussion as this was in Committee of the Whole previously last year. We had a meeting in August or September to review and discuss the data that was presented from the Planning Department around the numbers and how the new affordable accessory dwelling unit processed or was handled and permitted for the first, I believe, 14 months, 16 months of it being available to the city of Salem. So we've had a few Committee of the Whole meetings. We've had the joint public hearing. The Planning Department has provided their recommendation. And now it's back here with us tonight for conversation to then bring it back to council. So I wanted to bring up the Planning Board decision, which I did put into the shared drive. I can, it was pretty short as to what the recommendation was. They requested us to review their minutes and watch their meeting, which it was the one topic of the meeting. So that was in the shared drive. I hope everyone was able to access that and review that. Quite a great conversation that they had. And the Planning Board voted nine in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council adopt to propose the change to clarify the requirement that it is exterior, that the exterior sideways stairways to an affordable accessory dwelling unit above the first floor, which must be located on the rear or the side of the building, to adopt the proposed change to remove the bedroom restriction, to not adopt the proposed change to require utilities for accessory and primary dwelling to be on separate meters, and to adopt the proposed change to allow new detached structures and require detached structures to comply with the setback requirement of an accessory structure. So there were four items in there that the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend for passage. So the exterior stairway, removing the bedroom restriction, the correction on the utility, so essentially not to adopt the utility separation, and then allow new detached structures and require detached structures to comply with the setbacks requirement of an accessory structure. The Planning Board then took a separate vote on just the matter of the proposed change to remove the owner occupancy requirement. The Planning Board voted seven in favor and two opposed to adopt the proposed change to remove the owner occupancy requirement. So that's the matter we have in front of us this evening. It's essentially, I would say there are five topics in front of us. A few of them, we could probably get some quick consensus on. And then I'm assuming a few of them, we're going to have some discussion on. So I will just kind of take a quick pulse if anybody wants to make a comment or question. But I'm going off of our comments from the joint public hearing and from our Committee of the Whole meeting that we had previously around the exterior staircase, the bedroom restriction, and the not adoption of the utilities. So those three matters. If anybody would like to have further discussion on that, I'm very much happy to do so. But Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President Riccardi. Before we move towards any sort of consensus on that, I just want to remind people why we're not adopting the utilities. And that's because this came in as a request from the Engineering Department that required separate utilities on separate meters for exterior buildings. But that is such a huge cost burden. And since these units can't be sold separately, they are an ADU and they need to go with a primary structure. They conceded that there was no reason then to require a separate meter. So that's why we are, well, that's why I am proposing that we not adopt that third item of requiring utilities for the accessory on a separate meter from the primary structure.
Yes, thank you for that clarification, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Stott. I want to add something else on the utilities. There's a misconception that you need separate utilities as you expand spaces or add spaces. And a good example in Salem is 10 Federal Street, the old phone company, which has hundreds of offices in it, has one electric meter for the entire building. So there's no reason to do that. And by keeping this requirement, it ensures that these units cannot be converted into a separate rental, thank you, into a non-ADU rental.
Great, thank you. That is a little confusing about the utility, I think. We perhaps jumped the gun there. But that makes sense to not adopt the proposed change to require utilities for accessory dwelling unit. So I also added in there the proposal to remove the bedroom restriction. Were there any comments or, I guess, conversation around the Planning Board's recommendation to adopt? Counselor Presnisky?
Thank you, President Stott. We did have some discussion about it when the Planning Board presented its concepts to us a few weeks back. And my major question, which was satisfactorily answered, was my biggest concern was whether or not the third bedroom would really cram the living space and the, whether or not a three-bedroom unit with a kitchen and a bathroom in it could still fit inside of a 900 square foot area, which would make it very, very tight. However, the Planning Department said that yes, there is enough square footage to make it legal. And then I find it a good reason that if somebody needs a third bedroom, then they should have it. So I am not opposed to that.
Thank you for the, agreed. Okay, so that was two. And then the third one is the proposed change to clarify the requirement that is exterior stairways to an affordable accessory dwelling unit above the first floor, which must be located in the rear or side of the dwelling. So essentially, as the language is written, it's just not clear if that stairwell can be inside or outside. So it's just clarifying that exterior stairways. Any questions or comments on that recommendation? No? Okay. So I guess we can move on then, unless there's a motion on the floor. Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, Chair Stott, or President Stott. Why don't we separate them so we can just get rid of that? So I would make a motion to recommend adoption of the clarification of the exterior stairways, adoption of the removal of the bedroom restriction, and recommend not, that we do not adopt the change for requiring utilities for, on separate meters.
Second.
Counselor Marcelo moves to recommend adoption of exterior stairway clarification language, adoption of the bedroom, removing the bedroom restriction, and not adopting utility restrictions. Seconded by Counselor Cohen. Any discussion on this? Are we good for a vote? Okay. Since we do have some remote participation, this, or remote counselors this evening, we will be doing roll call votes. So on the matter to recommend, to counsel, adoption for, or recommend first passage on the adoption of exterior stairway clarification language, removing the bedroom restriction, and to not adopt the separate utilities. Counselor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Presnisky?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Nine counselors voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent. That matter carries. We will recommend that back to council. I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, President Stott. I just want to make sure that we didn't have to miss the opportunity of public comment at this time.
That's a good point. I did skim over that. That's a good point. I was going to take public comment, definitely. As we move out to the, I was assuming more public comment matters. But we do have a few members in the audience. If anyone wishes to speak on those three items specifically, so the exterior stairway definition, removing bedroom restriction, and the utility separation, please raise your hands if you're in Zoom or if you're in council chambers and wish to speak. Please step up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Counselor Varela, for that. We will move on. So we have two more matters in front of us this evening, or two more items regarding this amended language. So we could go either way with which one we want to discuss first. We have the proposal to change the new detached structures and require detached structures to comply with the setback requirements of an accessory structure. And then we have the removal of the owner occupancy requirement. I think these are two ones that we should probably try to keep separate, at least when our conversations are going. But I'm sure we have items to say about both. I guess I will start since I'm here. So I want to give a little history of my thought process with this. This has been a little ride in my, I'll give you a like tour of my brain and how I got to where I am this evening. We passed the new affordable accessory dwelling unit zoning ordinance in 2021. And with the passage of it, I felt it was restrictive, but I felt it was done in order to essentially get something done because it, you know, it was something that was needed. I did not agree with the restriction of, the previous restriction that the occupant had to be a relative or a caretaker. I thought that that was extremely limiting and essentially unfair. And I was glad to see that removed and as a first step. And I was looking forward to the next step of our amendments to this ordinance. So I was appreciative of the order to review the data and to see how many accessible accessory dwelling units we had permitted. Honestly, I was not surprised when I saw the low numbers of six or seven. And if anything, I think that that says, one, these are expensive to build. There's not going to be a large rash of these. And two, I think it continues to say that it's restrictive and it's limiting who can add these. I think removing these two items of the detached structures and requiring detached structures to comply with the setback, as well as removing owner occupancy, would remove the restrictions that are currently in place that really limit who can benefit from these units. The detached structures, to me, is an easy one. In my ward, I mean, and I think in most wards around the city, very few structures actually comply with current setbacks. And that is just extremely limiting as to what can be added on for an accessory structure. There are so many garages and barns and various structures in my neighborhood that people would love to put a unit above and they just can't because it doesn't conform with the setbacks that somebody X amount of years ago thought were appropriate, whereas I can reach out, you know, my bedroom window and touch my neighbor's house. Like, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I think that that's an easy one in my brain to allow that. But to keep within the requirements of an accessory structure, because this is, and it's by definition, an accessory structure. We're not building a second house on the lot. We're building an accessory structure. The other one, the owner occupancy requirement, that one is the one that my brain kind of went on a little traveling path of, I was honestly, oh, totally, remove it. Why not? Like, that doesn't make any sense to me to even have that there in the first place. And then I totally flopped after listening to especially the joint public hearing and different items. And it's like, oh, you know, I can see the other side and I do understand it. But I keep going back to my original, why is that restriction there? Why are we to say who can use something and who can't? Why are we pitting renters against homeowners? And I have listened to the meetings again and tried to hear how people have gotten to that restrictive concept and where they got there and where the purpose was. And I keep going back to the original purpose that we have in our ADU ordinance and reading it over and over again and trying to figure out where it says ownership is an important part. So the affordable accessory dwelling unit, the purpose, the first purpose is to add affordable rental units to the housing stock to meet the needs of smaller households and to make household, to make housing units available to households who might otherwise have difficulty finding housing. So as written and as we're not changing, the affordability requirement of the, of one of the units at least will have the 70% affordability. So we're meeting the purpose there. I don't see anything about ownership or whether or not it's renter occupied or owner occupied within that statement. Three-bedroom rentals are something that is extremely scarce and hard to come by in this city. So why are we saying, like, we don't have an ownership restriction on single-family homes in Salem. Why would we put an ownership restriction on whether or not you can rent a single-family home that's then also has an ADU? It just, it doesn't make any sense to me. Buying a home is not in the cards for everyone. And I would not want to limit the possibility of somebody to live in a home just because they're not able to get a ridiculously crazy mortgage right now and ridiculous property values and all of that. And there are just so many reasons why people choose to rent over buy. I moved a lot growing up and we only lived in certain towns for just a few years. And it did not make sense to buy a property in every single town and city that we went to. Would have been great to be able to rent a home and live in that versus not. But the inventory of those is so limited and so impossible. Why would we add additional restrictions on top of that? The second item is to encourage the efficient use of our city housing supply while preserving the character of the neighborhoods. Completing setbacks, I think that easily covers that. To maximize privacy, dignity, independent living, protect the stability, property values, and residential character of the neighborhood. To increase the supply of housing and the diversity of housing options in response to demographic changes such as smaller households or older households. Again, all of these items are creating more housing stock. Why would we add additional restrictions on it to not have that? So again, there's no limitation on single-family homes as to whether or not they're owner occupied or rental occupied. So I don't understand why we would have that here. On one hand, we're fighting really, really, really hard to have some sort of condo conversion ordinance and figure out how to keep that rental supply on the market and keep that going. And then here we are, on the other hand, saying, no, we won't have rentals for single families because for some reason, the character of the neighborhood might change or we're afraid of who might be coming in and renting. It's, we're, again, pitting the conversation, the words that are used in this conversation really distress me a little and sound like there's some sort of bias towards renters and towards landlords, making them seen as less than or not good neighbors. And again, as somebody that's been a renter and a homeowner, I just, I have a really hard time wrapping my brain around the negativity that is there. The specific scenarios around situations that might be able to fit into the pocket of someone that would feel okay with this, you know, a snowbird or somebody that, it just continues to allow those that own a property to continue to own the property. It doesn't help with our cycle of properties that we have here in the city. Anyway, I wanted to get that out. That's my stance. And I want to open the floor. I know I've taken more time than I normally have. So I appreciate you all listening to my, my conversation and the path that I went. I was not looking up when I saw. So I think Counselor Merkel is the first one, then Counselor Cohen, then Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, President Stott. Yes, I also really appreciate the collective desire here to create more affordable housing and the consideration of removing barriers to the success of ADUs. And I would like to speak also about the proposed removal of the owner occupancy requirement. I'd like to start by making the point that if some restrictions for ADUs are removed, the impact will probably still be minimal when we have data from other, you know, cities and towns that have done this. And I am also open to removing the owner occupancy requirement.
Chair, I don't think that Alice is coming through, Counselor Merkel is coming through.
I'm not?
Oh, thank you.
The city of Salem microphone is muted.
Oh, did I mute?
Because I'm.
Can you hear her now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, I usually don't hear that I'm not heard. Okay, I will start over again. Yes, first of all, I appreciate the collective desire here to create more affordable housing and the consideration of removing barriers to the success of ADUs. I also would like to speak about the proposed removal of the owner occupancy requirement. I'd like to start by making the point that if some restrictions for ADUs are removed, the impact will probably still be minimal, which the data from other cities and towns has shown. I am, I also, as was discussed by some of the members of the Planning Board, which supported the removal of the owner occupancy requirement, seven to two, one point that resonated with me also that President Scott had spoke to is that zoning exists to define allowed usage of properties and structures, not the users. We're supposed to be defining the uses of structures. Controlling who can live somewhere can result in unspoken biases and also, as was stated, is often against renters with some kind of assumption that they will be detrimental to a neighborhood as opposed to owners. So I find, I find that very troubling as well. Zoning should be about buildings and structures, not about who lives there. Also, the ADUs are a tool to assist people in being able to stay in their homes. And this doesn't change that. And it also has the support of the AARP. The owner occupancy requirement can also set up unwanted restrictions. Like, for example, an example would be what happens if an elderly couple that rents out an ADU in their home then decides to spend most of the year living in Florida and they'd still like to keep their home and investment here? Would that ADU have to be shut down? And I've also heard mentioned maybe the idea of having exceptions of how long someone's on their home. And I find this would get murky and difficult to enforce. If your home was owned for 10 years, is that okay? If nine years, it's not? I don't see how that could be done equitably either, to have some kind of, you know, conditions attached. So in agreement with what President Stott and the, some of the discussion at the Planning Board meeting, I do, I am open to removing the owner occupancy requirement. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to share these points to be considered.
Thank you, Counselor Merkel, Counselor Cohen, and then Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, President Stott. We do have some incentives that I don't think we've made the community aware of as well as we could, up to 45,000 to construct or convert a space and really significant tax credits if the, if the unit is under a certain, you know, percentage of fair market. But I really just have a question on the detached component. And maybe this was covered before, and if it was, I'm sorry. But if either someone on the council or Amanda could address this. It says new detached. So in my mind, a unit on top of a garage, would that an existing garage? Or, you know, building out a space in the back of an existing building, you know, residential structure, would that be considered new a structure? Because that would affect the way I think about things. And so I just have a question about the logistics of that sentence.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen. Now I see Amanda did turn her video on, so I will probably throw it to her. I'll try to summarize, I believe, currently, then there is no allowance of new detached structures. So the amendment would be to add in a totally new detached structure, as long as it fell within the setbacks. And also, the current draft, if it's added to an existing, it has to be followed within the setbacks of the primary structure. So it's changing that to follow the setbacks of an accessory structure. But Amanda, if you want to perhaps say that a little more eloquently than what I just did?
You got it perfectly. So the proposed ordinance would allow for new detached structures where the current ordinance does not allow for new detached. The current ordinance does allow for an accessory unit within an existing building, an existing detached building, as long as existing is defined as of the date that the ordinance was adopted. And that can be expanded, so you could have the addition over it. But you could not build a new detached structure.
Thank you, Amanda. Does that clarify? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. And I agree with some of the comments that I hear before. I disagree with some of the, I need to. I just want to make sure that we all know that this in front of us in the past bring a lot of debate, a lot of heated conversation, productive, and some of them was not really maybe in the right, in the right way. But at the end, I think that everybody agreed that we as a city need to accommodate more housing for the most needed one. But we also had to keep in mind that we had to keep a balance on what we do. We are a city that creates zoning for some reason. I mean, we are not in a place where we can decide today or tomorrow, let's change everything from, from zero to 100. We need to go gradually, understand that. They are a neighborhood. There are people who actually decided to live in here and pay their share. And we had to hear what they're concerned. I had two major concerns in the new changes that is in front of us. I think I hear so many residents in both sides of the aisle. And I think, like I say, some make sense to me, some doesn't make no sense. But at the end of the day, we here, we elected to hear both sides and try to find a common ground and, and, you know, bring, bring a outcome that satisfy, we would say, maybe the most we can. That's all we can do. I mean, we cannot do more than that. If it is personal to me, I have my own opinion. But it is about the people that are let off that we had to listen in. Some of the comments that I hear, and I want to make sure that is be clear. One of them is in regard to the zoning setback. I mean, like I say, we can not. One of them is, is, is in regard to the zoning setback. I mean, like I say, we cannot treat every one of the new attached like the primary home. I mean, this is a different aspect of a neighborhood that are going to bring some density. So we need to make sure that we really comply, or we change the zoning on where we live completely, or we treat the new attached in a way that really comply with what we have as ordinance. So to correct that in my end, I feel that we need to change the language. In order to say accessory, we, we, we had to change it for the primary home. That might change because that will allow to any change to the primary home that is in a zoning compliance to be adopted in, in a, in a proper way. So I repeat, I mean, we can not treat everyone or everything the same way we wanted to, but that's what we created it for. The zoning say that the primary home, so we need to treat it like a primary home. If they change, if we change that language, I think that correct that, that aspect right over there. The second one that I had concern, and I hear a lot of concern too, is about the owner occupy. There's many people, and I feel myself that the owner living on the property, that will increase the density in any neighborhood, will be significantly helpful if the owner, if the owner live in the, in the neighborhood. For many, many reasons. I think we hear a lot of comments in, in the process of this, like I mentioned at the beginning, from many neighborhoods, that if we treat this and we don't have the owner occupy, we're going to create some other issue that affect the quality of life. And not only that, and, and this is not a secret, and that's one of, one of the fear, one of the majority fear that we had in terms of this new accessory unit in place in Salem is the, we don't, we, we, most of us would like to, to see that everybody make business, but we know that one of the issues that we have is that developers sometimes take advantage of any loophole, and they try to move forward. And at the end, the result that we want to see, what we wanted to have for our communities, for our residents, is not really there. It's creating an effect that may be creating increase in rent. The neighborhood that is there, the neighbors that already paid their share for many, many years, had to move out because they cannot afford to live on one side, or they cannot comply with the consequence of having a very density neighborhood in which parking would be affected, traffic would be affected, and many others. So we wanted to make sure, like I said from the, my beginning of my comments, that we can have a very clear balance on what we do. We want to grow. We want to have some more housing. But remember, we have many, many years, almost 400 years in place, or many of the law that we are fighting right now, from today right away, we want to change it to be 100%. We need to go gradually and understand that we have residents there that need to be addressed to. And I chair, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hapworth has his hand raised, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, President Stott. I guess, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the majority of these, of these changes. I think that a lot of these makes sense. Detached structures, I think, is something that has been a, has been an element in, in the AD ordinance from the beginning, and it was sort of removed later on, if I remember correctly. And I, I had never had an issue with detached structures within AD, with ADUs. I think if you look at most of our neighborhoods in Salem, I think as, as it's been brought up, this is, this is a pretty common thing that we see in our neighborhoods. And I don't think there's that many places where we would see this even be able to happen based on what we have here. The one thing I did want to touch on though, is the, the owner occupancy. If, if we think back to, at least those of us who were on the council when this was, when this was passed, and when these debates, you know, we spent two years really debating, debating this topic, owner occupancy was something that a lot of us discussed. And, and we may have had different opinions on. I think if I were on the planning board, I may, I may have voted in favor of to remove it from a conceptual standpoint. But if we think back two years ago, the way we talked about this, to the general public, people would say things like, you know, no one in my neighborhood wants ADUs. And, and I know I would say, I know many of the people on this council would say, if you're, if people in your neighborhood don't want ADUs, people won't get them because this is a bottom-up development. This is a choice for the individual homeowner to start driving development within their, within their neighborhoods and not bought, not top-down from developers. This is a, a key part of how we sold these things to, to the public and how we discussed it with the public. This soon after, I have a, I have an issue just, I think, just morally with, with making this change. And I think as, as was brought up by Counselor Merkel, no matter what we do, this is not, this is not likely to have a major impact on, on affordable housing in Salem. The, the LEFO terrorist development that, you know, that will hopefully continue forward will create far more affordable housing for the city than, than any change we make to ADUs is will. And I just, I guess I don't think, is it whatever trade-off we get, however many units of ADUs we get, is it worth sort of, I guess, the damage to the, the public's trust that we make this change to this? And it's a substantive change. The, the, just, just conceptually, we think, the way we talked about ADUs, the way that we look at them, removing that owner occupancy requirement, I think is a, is a, it's a big difference. And, and, you know, having talked to people all over the city during campaign season and, and discussing these, this, these with people from all sides of the spectrum, people who, who support ADUs and people who don't support ADUs, the owner occupancy enjoyed pretty wide support in all neighborhoods, at least from, from my perspective, from my understanding. So that's something I would not be in favor of, of removing, but the other changes I'm very comfortable with.
Thank you. Counselor Presuske?
Thank you, President Stott. Here we are again, talking about ADUs. And those of us that were on the council two years ago, spent two years talking about this. And we tweaked it, we hammered it out, we understood each other. We put together something that made sense for the city. But all ordinances aren't perfect. We pass an ordinance and sometimes it has to be tweaked. And in this instance, yeah, there's a few things that have to be tweaked. But when it comes to the heart of this ordinance, one of the biggest reasons that we passed these ordinances, we're not tweaking it, we're changing two years of the work that we put into it. And I'm basically talking about the absentee ownership. To make it simple, when you're talking about absentee ownership, you're talking about an absentee landlord for, for a property that's in your neighborhood. Some people may say that's, could be relative to changing the, the zoning, R1, R2, or, or how you're going to, you know, how, how you, how the quality of life is in that neighborhood. I can tell you from a public safety standpoint, absentee owners have been a big problem in this city. And I think when an owner lives on the property, they're responsible for who lives on that property with them. And we put their feet to the fire when something goes wrong. And I think that's what the neighbors expect. I think that's what the city expects, and that's what they expect of us counselors, to be able to not change the, the, not change the culture of the neighborhood, because all of a sudden, the owner of the property now has two units and he, he's not living there because you've got ADU and you've got a primary unit. The main reason that we passed this, in my mind, is that we talked about the elderly people that couldn't afford to live in their home anymore, and could maybe offset their costs by making an ADU and living in their ADU. Or people who would offset their costs of owning the property, brand-new people, families coming in to Salem to be able to offset it by having an ADU. That's the meat of the ADU, is to, is to get that little bit of housing, affordable housing added to it. As Counselor Hapworth said, ADUs are not the answer to the affordable housing in this, it's a drop in the bucket. ADUs are not going to answer affordable housing. But what's, that, that's not the impact. The biggest impact is, what is the neighborhood, what is the quality of life going to be when you take away the responsibility of the owner not being on that property? And I think that has a huge impact in the quality of life. I'm looking forward to hearing some public comment on this also. Thank you.
Counselor Watsonfelt? See, your hand is raised?
Yeah, thank you, President Stott. I have a couple of comments or, and a question maybe for Amanda, as it pertains to the new detached change, the new detached buildings change. So it, it, so there's, just to be clear, the way that the, the original letter came in to us, I personally found the, the, the way it was written to be a little bit confusing. So currently, what we have is no new detached structures with current setbacks in accordance with whatever zone you live in, which could range between 15 and 40 feet, I think is what it said. And that can be really restrictive for a couple of reasons. One, you know, if someone wants to be able to build a new building on their property, perhaps that's entirely well within their rights. And two, what the setbacks are. So we have actually two changes that are, that pertain to this, to this item, right? One is, one is the allowing the new detached building and reducing the setbacks to five feet, which I would love to better understand from a, a numbers perspective. You know, I know there was a lot of conversation around how the, the setback restriction limited the, the potential for, for adding the ADUs even onto houses, right? Even onto like houses like mine, where my backyard is like 25 feet deep. But I would love to understand what that opens up for us now with regards to both new, new detached buildings and a five-foot minimum setback requirement. Like, does that just like, are we officially like citywide? Or are there still some swaths of properties that, that wouldn't comply? If I may, President?
Yes, thank you.
Stott?
So, yeah, there's still a lot of properties that are just not going to comply. I think we looked at this data just in terms of dimensional standards and found that 90% of the residential lots in Salem don't comply with the minimum lot size.
Being five feet or being?
No, that's the minimum, the size of the lot. So
Oh, gotcha.
In zoning districts, you need a 15,000 square foot lot. And those, and many of the properties, only 5,000 square feet. And within that 5,000 square feet, usually the house takes up most of the footprint. Or, I mean, there are a lot of properties that are 2,500 square feet. So even if you have a 1,300 square foot home, that's taking up a really big chunk of the property, and there's just not enough room to fit an accessory unit on there, this still has to be a distance between the buildings for public safety purposes and, and a zoning requirement with a distance. And so even, it, it will certainly open an opportunity for some properties. But, you know, many of the homes in Salem were built before the zoning ordinance, and they just don't comply with the dimensional standards. And it would be pretty challenging to create an accessory unit, particularly in the historic districts where you see homes that essentially already take up the entire property.
That's really helpful. So, so it sounds like, um, so I think where I'm struggling a little bit, right, is, is like, both of those things feel like a rather potentially dramatic change, right? New and a five-foot minimum. And I am, honestly, even tonight, I'm still, I'm still on the fence about that, about, about both of those in, in together. And I wonder if there is a recommendation from planning, like if you had to pick one, you know, given what we have available and the likelihood of building real, either new detached units or attached dwelling units that, that would then be able to be fit within, within that post, like that sort of postage stamp size, right? What, is there one that's like gonna further enable a path without sort of really dramatically, you know, not to, not opening the floodgates, that's would be a dramatic thing to say, because I don't think, it sounds like that's not possible. But is there one of those two things that is a higher, a higher priority or a higher recommendation from the planning department?
Well, currently, the ordinance does not allow new detached structures. So there is no path for a new detached structure. If you were to allow new detached structures but not modify the setback, then what would likely happen is you, you're not going to get many applications. And if you do get the applications, they're most likely would need either a special permit or a variance. And a variance requires a hardship, and that would be a very challenging hardship to find. So it creates a, a very difficult path. I don't know if it would be a feasible path for most property owners. And it's risky, it's expensive, it's, it's, and it's, there's not a known. And so a property owner's putting a lot of money upfront and a lot of time, and they may end up what they know, or they could end up with an appeal, which is challenging, and it could deter property owners from applying.
And Chair, I can't see you, so it, may I continue if I have a follow-on question?
Yes, please.
Thank, thank you. So Amanda, alternatively, right, if we were to say, okay, we're going to continue with no new detached units, but we're really all very comfortable with that five-foot setback change, does that, does that do anything for a number of the properties in Salem? Is that, is that almost more possible in that way? Do you know what I'm saying? Am I asking clearly?
Yeah, I don't know if I would say it's more possible, because I'm, I don't have data on how many existing detached structures exist. But if you were to say no new detached structures, but detached structures that are existing are allowed to have that five-foot setback, then it, it's a handful of properties that already have a detached structure. And, and there are properties in Salem that have detached structures that have no setback. There are some that have five or seven feet. So I just, I don't have the data to be able to answer that.
And it would also apply to new attached structures as well. Someone wants to put in, like bump out the side of their house and do a little in-law, you know, now that five foot maybe makes that possible for folks with relatively small lot sizes?
Let me take a look at how it's written again. Because the, the detached structure shall comply with all regulations set forth in 3.2.4, with the exception of setbacks. And that's the section that's proposed to be removed. And it specifically calls out detached. So that means in attached structure, your building, in addition to the home, you would have to meet the setbacks of a primary, of the primary home.
Primary home, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That's helpful.
Thank you. Any, you're good? Okay. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. First off, concerning the proposed change to detached structures, I commend the planning department for a creative way of figuring out the setback. I do think the five feet, most of the time, is going to be reasonable. Through you to Amanda, is there a setback for a detached ADU to the proximity of a, a budding property? Not a budding property, a budding structure?
Yes, there is. Let me pull that up again.
I believe it's 10 feet.
Yeah. In 3.2.4.3, the unattached structure shall not be located closer than 10 feet to any other building on the same lot or in a budding lot.
Thank you. You know, I, I'm all for detached structures. I guess since we don't really have data on how many detached ADUs and the implications of just the neighborhood, I, I, I'm in full support of this. Concerning the owner occupancy requirement, this is a tough one. I, I really think it comes down to, you know, we, we have renters and, you know, I really feel that, you know, this could benefit the city in general to create more units. I think that ADUs are just another tool in the toolbox. I do not foresee this becoming a, a thing where you have 50% of single-family homes or are in the R2 adopting an ADU. They are inherently expensive by nature for construction. So for that, I, I fully support making this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercile?
Thank you, President Stott. So I'm going to start with separate structures. Here's where I struggle with separate structures and the five-foot setback. We have all these historic neighborhoods that are the most desirable neighborhoods to live in in Salem by a lot of, a lot of people's thoughts, that do not comply with their underlying zoning. And in many cases, have no front setback, have no side setbacks, are attached to the building next door. And these are the neighborhoods that people love. And these are the neighborhoods that people love. Bots Court, Federal Street, Derby Street, and all the little side streets off of Derby Street, River Street, Carpenter Street. I mean, you could go on and on and name all these streets that houses are right next to each other. People love to live there. People love to walk on those streets because they are beautiful. They're they're beautiful neighborhoods. Um, and yet, we want to say. You can't have this separate structure because it's too close to the person next door. I I mean, there's already building codes about how you build these structures. If it's too close, you can't have windows on that side. You have to have special fire, um, proof, proofing built into your structure. Um, we've got building codes to cover that. Separately from that, though, is the cost. And if people listen to that planning board meeting where Helen Sides, who is an architect, said that the minimum, the minimum for a small separate structure is $350,000. And that's the bare minimum and probably goes up towards $500,000. It involves every subcontractor that you could think of. It involves bringing in all of your utilities. This is not something that anyone would take lightly and there are not going to be thousands of these structures littering our neighborhoods. But there may be one or two or three homeowners who find that they need to house an elderly parent who decide that, okay, I'm gonna build the garage and put a unit up on top. And this could fit the bill for them. It couldn't be, it could be a a young adult that's just graduated from high school or college that doesn't have the the financial means to move away from home. But everyone knows that these young adults need to live independently. And so this may fit the bill. This is not gonna be. Something that's going to change the character of Salem as we know it. I just don't understand why anyone would think that at that cost, and especially right now, that we are going to see thousands of new units or even hundreds of new units or even 50 new units. It's not gonna happen. That we're not gonna be having all of these separate structures as ADUs. So. I I I will say that there was talk about decreasing the back setback to allow ADUs behind the main, the primary residence, that that is too high, that I think right now it might be 30. Um, and there was talk about maybe allowing that to go down to to something like 10 to better accommodate these, but that's not part of this discussion right now. The owner occupied is something that I have gone back and forth on and I have struggled with understanding. And I think part of it is I was struggling with my own bias which kicked in. Um, I I think that ward counselors especially do get complaints about, um, absentee landlords. Tenants that, you know, are being disruptive in the neighborhood. But I really sat down and I thought about my past three plus years as a city counselor and the complaints I've been getting and who I've been hearing from. And I have to say that first and foremost is complaints about speeding in neighborhoods. Second, if I think about complaints about residents, it's homeowners. It's not renters, it's homeowners. I, yeah, I get some complaints about. Um, renters in certain locations, especially in Castle Hill where it's very dense and there's student, there's student apartments there and so. Um, but the com, the complaints there are more where they're parking and much less these days about noise because we've got, we've got groups in the city that are working on that. We have a community impact unit that is working with these properties and working with the with the landlords to create better neighbors. So I I really had to, I really came to the conclusion that I hear more about property owners that aren't keeping up the outside of their property, aren't mowing their lawn enough, um, you know, complaints, other other type types of complaints, um, you know. Storing things outside that they shouldn't be storing, making noise themselves like it, but these are homeowners that they that live right there. So I think we really need to think about. Labeling renters as problems or labeling absentee landlords as creating issues in neighborhoods. We need to back that up with more than anecdotal evidence because that's really harmful. Not everyone wants to own a home, even though we've all been raised that this is the American dream. Not everyone wants to do that. And especially young people these days need to, need to prioritize where they're gonna spend their money, right? And they don't want to deal with the problems of homeownership. They'd rather call a landlord or call them the whoever manages their apartment. Um, there's people that would rather rent a very small space and spend their money on travel. There's people who don't want the burden of owning a car, don't want the burden of living in one spot for a long time and paying a mortgage. They want the freedom of being able to go wherever they want, when they want. Um, but young people today are financially burdened and cannot own a home. They don't have the means to own a home. And it's not gonna happen for a long time. And so to label renters as problems in neighborhoods is a problem itself. And I think we need to think about the words we're using. There's a lot of renters in Salem. I don't think we can say that we get constant complaints about renters in Salem. I just don't think we do. I I know that it's a knee jerk reaction to think that, but it's simply not true. It's a fear. And I acknowledge that it's a fear and it's something that I think of myself, but when I stop to think about it and look through the data, it's just not true. I I do go back to zoning as about the structure and the use of the building and not who's living there. That should be the intention of zoning. It is, was not the intention of zoning when it was first written, for sure. It was who lives where and separating renters from owners. That is for sure why zoning was created. And so, again, we need to think about what we're doing to perpetuate that idea and and I I don't want to perpetuate that. I, so I started out against removing the homeowner requirement. I'm, after listening to that meeting and after doing more reading and thinking about it and thinking about what we're saying about our neighbors who are renters, it made me very uncomfortable. Um, I will say what I struggle with is not a single family home that adds an ADU and then, you know, decides that they want to rent it for some reason, if they want to move south but keep their property. Yeah. There's single family homes that are being built in my ward that, um, they, the developer wants to create them with an ADU. So that whoever buys it has that extra income to be able to afford it. This is the market for young families that are trying to buy their own home and that extra income would help them. Um, so that's one, that's one thing there. What I was struggling with was why would an an owner, whether they live there or not, of a two or a three family want to create an ADU instead of creating a new rental unit if they have that space? We certainly have old historic buildings, very large buildings in Salem that were built in the late 1800s and early 1900s for working class families when families used to be a lot bigger. And so, you know, a flat and a two and a two family was pretty big. So the idea of, well, why are you taking, why don't you just create another unit? Why don't you just do it the right way and create a separate unit for a rental? The problem is zoning. If you have a two family home in an R2, there's no pathway for you to create a third unit. That's a problem. If you're a three family in an R2, you can go to the ZBA because you're a nonconforming structure already and you can ask for another unit. This makes no sense to me. I, and this is the problem with zoning. This is the problem with creating rules on this huge group of a neighborhood that is out of compliance to start. There is, there's no way you can lay zoning on top of existing neighborhoods and have it make any sort of sense. So the, so creating an ADU, if you have an R2, if you if I have a two family in an R2. This could allow you to create an ADU, but you could never sell it. You could never turn it into a condo. That's a benefit in my mind for renters, um, and for keeping this this housing stock. I guess I'm leaning right now towards getting rid of the home, the homeowner requirement because it, it feels more like. Fear to me and trying to stop some sort of, some sort of issue that I just, I can't say that I see a lot. And so. And again, if there's issues with a building, if there's. If there's health code violations, we have a health department, we have a building department, we have a police department, we have a community impact unit that works with all of those departments to, to help these these people, whether they're homeowners or whether it's absentee landlords. I I guess that's, I guess that's it right now. Thank you.
Um, so we've all made one comment. Thank you all for your comments. Uh, we can do another quick go around. I do want to make sure we open it up for public comment. We have a number of attendees on here on Zoom. Um, but Counselor Cohen, I see you have your your hand raised and I will also make a comment.
Thank you, President Stott. Um. Going back to what you said, I, um, a tour of my brain is a circular file. So, um, I agree with Counselor Marsillo. The planning board meeting was really instructive and I changed my mind several times just watching that meeting. Um, I do, I, I don't know if I've actually made a decision even now, but I have some comments. I don't, I do believe, as Counselor Marsillo said, that the, the underlying problem is zoning. Um, there's an unfairness, as she pointed out, for some property owners to be able to do things just because of the nature of their property relative to the zone. I also believe that we have too often in this council, uh, you know, in the past and in the present, um, attempted to pass ordinances and said, well, you know, we don't have to worry about this because not that many are going to happen. I believe if we pass an enabling ordinance to benefit our community, to increase, you know, our rental stock or, uh, you know, to benefit the environment, we shouldn't ever think, well, it's only going to affect a small part of our community. We need to, we need to make sure that when we pass something, it's something that as many people as possible within the parameters that are set up can participate. I also feel like this neighborhood quality, um, it, you know, term is a code and I'm very uncomfortable with it. Uh, there are people, maybe even on the council, who are absentee landlords. Um, I own a multifamily and it's my property. I set the rules, you know? The leases are are generated by me. And, um, I have a lot more impact on what goes on on my property than the tenants do. But it's really important when I interact with the tenants that they feel that this is their home, that this is a place for them to be. And so I go back to what Counselor Merkel and other people have said, and it came up during the planning board, that we shouldn't have a bias against anyone because of their station, where they live, how they live, you know, how they choose to be in their space. Um, this is about creating a safe, comfortable space for everyone, no matter where they are, whether they have a home or not. And so I think that's really important. I I live on a street, Hancock Street, that has, I think, less than 30. But, um, properties. And two of those properties were so egregious problem properties that this city council, I think eight years ago or so, voted that the city could actually take ownership of those properties. One burnt down, but there's another one. And so I agree with Counselor Marsillo that it's not the people who reside in the property who are responsible for the way the property is, you know, for the. What goes on in that property, it's really up to the property owner, whether they live on the property or not. So, um, I'm really conflicted because I do feel like, uh, as Counselors Hapworth and Prozinski said, there was an intent in the original revision of the ordinance that, as President Stott said, I was incredibly uncomfortable with the original ordinances passed. I thought it was limiting. I thought that it was would really, um, be very difficult for most people to take advantage of it. And I felt in some ways it, there was a bias there about who could create an ADU. And so the revised ordinances passed, I believe there was some intent. So I'm very conflicted because I do want to make sure that people understand that renters in our community are part of our community and, you know, our economy and our culture is based on, on them as well as everyone else. And just because they don't pay property tax doesn't mean that it's not viable in our city. So I, I'm just, you know, I know we have more discussion and public comment, which I'm interested in, but this is a really a difficult situation for us. I still go back to this idea that we have some incentives that we, that could encourage people. Um, that maybe people are not aware of. And the one last thing is. We, we know, I mean, I know from when I was doing the recycling, going to every house, that there are hundreds of existing ADUs that are not legitimized. And we haven't really given those property owners reason to do so. And the process of converting those units to make them, you know, legitimate is not easy within the city, you know, regulations. So I feel like in some ways this is a imbalance because those units are in more affluent parts of our city. And I want ADUs to be available for every quadrant of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marsillo?
I just want to say one thing to that. Um, renters do pay property tax. They don't write out the check, but their rent goes towards the property tax. Landlords are not paying it out of the kindness of their heart. It's renters do pay property tax. And and that shouldn't, and I know that's not what you meant. And I, I, it's just, I hear this a lot, that, um, they're not paying property tax and others are.
It, it. That was the intent of what I was trying to say, is that we use the term someone pays property tax, so they're in a different class than someone else. So I.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I just want to stem on these comments as well about, especially about the renters and what I feel is code for quality of life. Um, and to remind us that we're here to talk about zoning this evening, which, as has been mentioned a few times, zoning is, purpose is to state use, not users. But there is obviously a history that it has done that. And we are continuing that conversation this evening and it, we need to be, I think, careful with our words and what problems we're trying to solve this evening. We will not solve an absentee landlord problem by restricting, um, owner occupancy on an affordable ADU property. Um, again, I just want to reiterate, like, I live on a street that has single family, two family, three family and four families. I do not know if my neighbor in the single family next to me owns their property. I mean, yeah, I could look it up. I'm like, do you? But I don't know if they're renters or owners and I really don't care. All I care is that they show up at the block party, they make cookies, they're good neighbors, they bring out their trash, they shovel their sidewalk. It really, I honestly do not find a difference. And if there is a difference, it is not something that we should solve with the hard hammer that is zoning. that is zoning. It, it doesn't make any sense to me and I don't understand why we would try to do that. I also feel, you know, we, we've had this in place, however it was sold or discussed in the beginning, it's breathed, we've had six or seven units permitted. I'm ready to open it up and see how many more we can do. The cost of these units is probably what hit me over the head the hardest of listening to the planning department meeting, like, wow, these are, these are not going to be added in, in enormous numbers, just purely because of the cost. And especially add the costs and then how could it be affordable with that cost added in? So I think it's a balance that we're trying to get to tonight. But I also want to note too, that we're not eliminating owners being able to do this. So there will still be owner occupied properties. We're just opening it up that it can include both. Counselor Hapworth, I noticed your hand was up while I was speaking. So Hapworth, Merkel, and then hopefully we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, President Stott. I, I too live in a neighborhood that has mixtures of housing types, two-family, eight-family, ten-family, a boarding house, single families. There's, there's a mixture. I don't, I don't personally have concerns about neighborhood character. I just want to be clear that that's not, not the point, not a point that I brought up and not a, not a concern that I have specifically or at all. I've heard a lot of concerns here tonight or a lot of, a lot of discussion about renters versus owners and not pitting renters versus owners. I think I'm having a hard time wrapping myself around that, that line of reasoning here. This is the, no matter what, the, the folks living in these units are going to be renters. This is the conditions for, for which these are going to operate under. So I just want to be clear, this is not, I don't, I don't think, wherever councillors fall on this, this is not a renters versus owners conversation. The other concern I had, I brought it up earlier, but I think that I, I would have to agree with a number of my colleagues here tonight, that the zoning is broken in, in cities all across America right now. And this is, we need, we need a big, hard look at zoning right now. I have a concern about the public trust though, in, in how we tackle these issues. If you think about ADUs, for, over the course of four years, there's some, some of the most attended meetings that we had, the joint public hearings that went till midnight in some cases on, on ADUs or we had these discussions. We have 11 people in the, in the, in the audience right now, and I'm not sure how many are in person. But I have a concern about passing this, passing this with something that we sold. As I said earlier, I'm not going to reiterate those points, but passing something that, that we discussed for four years and then coming back and making this change, which I feel is substantive in front of 11 or 13 attendees right now. So just want to clarify those points. Thank you.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. And I'll be careful, I'll, I'll be brief because I know we want to get to public comment. But as far as revisiting anything that involves zoning, with the, with the history of zoning and how harmful it's been and how it's been used in the past, I do feel comfortable reexamining any zoning that was put in place, whether it's two years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, that might have had unintentional bias in the, in the zoning that, that was put in place. I, I do feel not only that it's okay, but, but, but an obligation to, to, to look at zoning through a more equitable lens and, and take, take a good, hard look at any zoning that, that is in place because of the comments, you know, that have been made about the harm that, that it can cause. And I'll reiterate again, that it's supposed to be about usage and not the users. So I am comfortable with, with going back and taking a good, hard look and making changes to zoning that if, if we all agree on is, is a more equitable direction for us to go in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So members of the public, we actually don't have anyone in chambers this evening, but we do have a decent amount on, in Zoom land. If you would like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand. I will call you in order of your hand being raised and allow you to talk. When I do do that, please state your name and address to the record. The two items that we're talking on, or that we're commenting on right now are the detached structures and the owner occupancy requirement. Firsthand, I see is Stephen. Stephen, I'm going to allow you to talk. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Stephen Nickerson. I live at five Cedar Crest Ave in Salem. Been a resident homeowner for almost 40 years. And so as far as the detached units, I feel that they, they should be compliant with setbacks as they are. And as far as owner occupied, I feel that owner occupied is, is the way to go. The whole idea with ADUs, as far as, as I understand, is that it was to help people to stay in their homes as they aged, help with expenses, et cetera. And they were able to create the ADU, but it just seems like now we're pushing it, almost forcing the issue to the point where it's almost like a zoning change when we go to the owner occupied, or not, not to be no owner occupied unit or structures, properties, I should say. And so, I mean, overall, there's been very few ADU applications. So we spend so much time and energy on this subject that I don't even see the need for it. There's probably a handful of applications. And if someone needs to, to do this, they can just submit an application. We don't have to have all these ordinances and to, to be passed. Let's move on to some of the more important things. Not to mention the fact that a one-bedroom would be $1,400 based on 70% of the rental average rents for this area. I'm not sure how many people can afford that, that we're trying to help out. And there's a lot of building, a lot of new apartments going up in Salem, as far as I can see. And so why do we need, need more of these ADUs? And so as a result, I just think that we've spent too much time and we just need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Stephen. If there are any other members of the public or attendees in the audience this evening that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Terrence, I am going to allow you to talk. Please state your name and address for the record and provide your comment.
Hi, yes. My name is Terrence Storm. I live at Ford Liberty Hill in Salem. I've been here a little over 10 years. I have a multifamily. It's an actual structure that I happened to acquire out of an odd circumstance because the prior homeowner that I purchased the property from had been using it as a three-family. And when the fire inspector came through at the time of purchase and sale for him, discovered that one of the units was being used illegally, he had to actually change the sale aspects. And the purchaser at that time said, I was wanting to buy a three-family and now it's a two-family. Deal's not going to happen. So it actually opened an opportunity for me to come in and purchase the property and fit my needs at the time. We kind of discussed on many aspects of, you know, having homes where people can age in place, allowing sort of senior citizens to continue to be able to afford their properties and for the maintenance and such. But someone else actually brought up an interesting point of property developers looking at taking parcels, subdividing them down, building single families, but building them with accessory dwelling units, which I find interesting. As someone who's been on the market, looking at other kinds of properties to expand and develop in myself, you know, it's an interesting piece because properties around here have actually doubled in value. From the time I purchased my property, a little over 10 years ago, property costs have, you know, doubled. So, you know, as a young person that has come out and graduated from college recently, I can imagine that they're looking at the costs to be able to purchase even a single family, just to be daunting. And I think, you know, there's probably a large number of them that are finding the only thing they can afford is renting. There was an interesting topic touched on. At $1,400 seems to be a very high amount for a renter. As a person who monitors renting properties, property listings for rent, most of the people that are actually looking to fill those two, three-family, or, sorry, two, three-bedroom units are actually asking for somewhere in the range of $2,000 to $2,600. So $1,400 would actually be a bargain for most people looking for a place. So, you know, I'm quite in favor of the whole detached piece. I think that it's, it opens a really great opportunity for people to look at the accessory structures that they may already have on their property, be able to revamp them and be able to use those as living units, whether they choose to put them on top of a garage, rebuild a garage, or just convert the, an accessory building that they may have using as a garage because they find that most of the cars are going to be on the street anyways. So, you know, give them the opportunity to build those structures within a smaller setback area. But then to touch on the other topic of owner occupied, you know, I find that the whole ordinance process is all organic, it's dynamic, it's a changing aspect. I mean, look, you know, yes, it took a number of years for the city to agree that we were going to permit accessory dwelling units. The point is, it's a growing thing. So I think, you know, what we should do is, we should still keep with owner occupied and then we can see how things develop with those other restrictions removed as far as setbacks and such. But still keep the owner occupied for the time being. And perhaps five years, we can see how people in the public take to it. Because it takes time for the public to become aware that these options and these available features of our ordinance are available to them. You know, I know that I've received pamphlets in the mail talking about the accessory dwelling units. I, I find that to be helpful in helping spread the word. But I find that some of the people that are receiving those kinds of pamphlets are not in a position to actually take advantage of it. It's the actual property owners. And some of those property owners never got the pamphlets because they're not present. They're, so, you know, I think the keeping with the owner occupied is, is the way to go for the time being. And as life goes on, we'll modify it again, perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Terrence. If there are any other members of the public that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Using the Zoom function, raise hand. Quite nice this evening. I'll keep my eye on that and move back to council. So we have two matters, I guess, that we still have discussion and we need to, or we not need to, but we need to kind of figure out what our next steps are going to be. I think we should separate these out. Yep, okay. So the first item that I'm going to bring back up for topic, look around, is the detached structure. I'm just looking for the language of it. Sorry, if you could see me, I have two mice and I keep picking the wrong one to use. So, adopt, the, the planning board recommendation was to adopt the proposed change to allow new detached structures and require existing detached structures to comply, and no, to comply with the setback requirements of an accessory structure. So in summation, our existing AADU ordinance flat out does not allow new detached structures to be built as an affordable accessory. This proposed change would be to allow a new detached structure on the property as long as it follows the setback requirements of an accessory structure, which the setback requirements for accessory structures are general for any accessory structure within the city. They're same for all zones. We talked about a few different numbers, like 10 feet to the principal, I believe, five feet from the rear lot line, but those were not proposing to change. And then the existing detached structure, we do, in the current ordinance, allow an ADU to be built on that as long as it complies with setbacks of the principal, which are different by zone and more restrictive than the accessory use. So this change, proposed change is to have both new and existing comply with accessory use. So I mean, we could even split this out if we need it to or move on this one. Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that we recommend adoption by first passage of the amendment to change, to, to allow new detached structures and require detached structures to comply with the setback requirements of an accessory structure.
Counselor Marsillo made a motion to recommend first passage to, of the adoption of the proposed change to allow new detached structures and then require detached structures both within the required setbacks requirements of an accessory structure. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Merkel. Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. And I have a friendly amendment to replace the, the accessory into primary structure instead of having accessory. So that way can, we can kind of fix the issue that we hear so many people talking about zoning things. So every, everything is being the same, primary, it's be attached to any, any, any new building or whatever we do. So the primary, the primary zoning ordinance that we had in place is going to be kind of carried over to the, any addition that we do to the house, primary instead of accessories.
So there's a request for a friendly amendment for primary. I will note that that is the current ordinance is primary for existing detached. That's currently how the ordinance is written, to follow the requirements of the primary setbacks. So it would just be a no vote on that regard. We could split, possibly split this up for, because the difference here would be new detached structures. But we can maybe work with that friendly amendment if there's a second on the floor. No, any questions or further discussion? Okay. So Counselor Marsillo moved for recommendation, as just stated, I feel like it's a word garble every time I try to say it, for new detached structures to be allowed and existing detached structures, both to comply with the setback requirements of an exist, of accessory structures, which, so a yes vote would be to recommend adoption of that amendment, a no vote would be to keep it in place as it is, which is the primary setbacks for the existing and no detached. Any questions, comments? Okay. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Hapworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
No.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So on the matter of detached structures and accessory setbacks, nine voting, eight in favor, one opposed. So we will move to, or we will report to recommend that back for adoption, for first passage. We can move on to the next one, the owner occupancy. Any further conversations or questions? I'll throw it out. Let's check and see if there's any more public comment. I don't see any hands raised. Counselor Varela?
If I may make a motion.
If I may make a motion, like, make a motion to recommend adoption of first passage to change to remove the homeowner occupancy requirement.
Council Varela moves to recommend adoption for first passage to remove the owner occupancy requirement. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Merkel. Under discussion? Council Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. I offer another friendly amendment. And I move that paragraph 5B that requires the owner occupied to leave on the, the unit, not to be deleted, but to le, to be left in this ordinance. That's a friendly amendment that I present.
Can you repeat that?
Okay. I moved a paragraph 5B that requires the owner to leave in one of the units to not be deleted, but to be left in this ordinance.
Yeah, so, so that would be a no vote. So the motion, right? Yeah, the motion is to remove that, to recommend the removal of that. So we can't really, like, that would just be a no vote. Yep. Any further discussion? So on Council Varela's motion to recommend the adoption, oh, to adopt the proposed change for first passage to remove the owner occupancy requirement. Sorry, so many here. I'm going to do roll call vote since we have remote attendees. Okay, ready? Council Watsonfeld?
No.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Prezniewski?
No.
Council Marsillo?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council Hapworth?
No.
Council Dominguez?
No.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
Ye, yes.
Yes, yes. And myself is a yes. So nine members voting again, five in the affirmative, four in the negative. So this will be sent back to council with a recommendation. We will obviously report on the vote for how that went out to adopt the proposed change to remove the owner occupancy requirement. Any further questions, discussion? Council Cohen?
Move we adjourn.
Council Cohen moves for adjournment, seconded by Council Varela. I do need to do a roll call vote because we are remote. Council Watsonfeld?
Yes.
Council Varela?
Yes.
Council Prezniewski?
Yes.
Council Marsillo?
Yes.
Council Merkel?
Yes.
Council McLean? I'm sorry, is absent. Council Hapworth?
Yes.
Council Dominguez?
Yes.
Council Cohen?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. At eight oh seven PM, we are adjourned. Thank you all for a great conversation. We can get through these, these conversations in a respectful manner, which I truly appreciate, and I will see you all at the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Thanks.